...to the regular city council meetings, or the special work session meeting of March 7th through 2016, 6:31. We do have a forum, a public forum, and members may address the city council on items not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for county records and limited remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frank their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. During the city council, not take official action on items discussed at this time when we place the matter on file. Take it under advisement, refer the matter to the staff or committee for future report if your command will be placed on the upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak? Go ahead.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Cliff Dusset, and I live at 14600 Pine Avenue in Little Falls. And I'm here because last fall, there's some beautiful mature pine trees were harvested at soccer fields adjacent to Pine Avenue. Removal of these trees has exposed Earl and Mere Storage Lot containing dilapidated school buses and scrap metal, forcing our neighborhood and our community to view eyesore better suited for an industrial zoning and not residential. Little Falls City Ordinance Chapter 11.05, Section M2D clearly states, "Auto wrecking or salvage yards, junkyards, used auto parts and similar uses are required to be screened by fence or compact evergreen vegetation, which is at least 50% opaque and at minimum six feet high, which has been removed now since the school board has removed them trees." Myself and other concerned Little Falls residents have contacted City Hall regarding this issue and eagerly anticipating a plan of action to remedy this unsightly problem. Right now, I sit on my deck in my front yard of my house and look at a junkyard. It does not take a real rocket scientist or a real estate expert to anticipate the potential decrease in my property value and those of my neighbors should this issue go unresolved. I don't know if the school board really knew what they were revealing when they harvested these trees. Numerous families from Little Falls utilize the soccer fields at a regular basis. It might be a bit disappointed when viewing a photo of their child scoring a winning goal with a junkyard in the background. Or greater concern, in my opinion, is what kind of impression is given to those visiting from other communities when they see a beautiful recreational facility that orders a junkyard? A mistake has been clearly made by the school board. All I'm asking is for the city, in conjunction with the school board, in an act and a collective proactive manner, find a solution that will restore once the beautiful neighborhood that was out there on Pine Avenue. With that, in my close, you know, I've called, I've asked. I have some citizens down here that are concerned with this. I've had city hall board members up here that stopped at my house. I have put a lot of flyers out, and I've got a lot of good response in our community. And a lot of people are very concerned. What I'm stating is how many people that have been not been over there since you guys, they harvested them trees, that, you know, a lot of the soccer families wait till they go over there. When that's all cleaned up, you know, I mean, there's a bunch of wood there now, but, you know, it is an eyesore. And we really need to do something about it. That really does decrease the property value of all of our houses out there.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like to say.
Yep. Name and address?
Mark Dinko, 16925 Mississippi Boulevard. I just want to follow up what Cliff said about, you know, if the school board would have taken and made a computer simulation of what that would look like as opposed to when they did the computer simulation of what the new field house would look like, and people who looked at it, they would never have cut a single tree. But it's done, and it's over with. And you, as an elected body, I understand the restrictions and the difficult nature that is involved with this. School board did it, it was a dumb move, but bottom line is it's done, but it's also within your city limits. And all I ask is that, as elected body, you seek some type of creative solutions to potentially, if legally so, involve local citizens with labor and things like that, that we could really fix this problem and make it work, you know, and move on from here. And just like I said, I know money's tight. You don't exactly have things budgeted for something like this, but if we can find something both financially and manpower-wise, be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Robin Hansel, 807 First Street Southeast. I'd like to start by saying that since the city is going to be spending a lot of money, thousands of dollars, on a new website, I certainly hope that council meetings, EDA meetings, HBC meetings, and other pertinent city meetings are published on the website so that disabled people can view them. People who can't come to the meetings or don't want to come to the meetings but do want to view them can see them somewhere other than on my blog. I'd also like to ask, since the city's getting ready to budget a portion of the parking lot over by the county courthouse, but there's none of that money allotted in the city budget so far. Where will the money come from, and when are the bathrooms in this facility going to be made disability-friendly so that people can come to city hall to meetings and actually go and use the restroom if they need to? I've asked this for two and plus years now, and no action. And I think it really says something about the city, that senior citizens and people who are disabled truly can't use that bathroom. The city has an advertising bench contract with GMR2 Investments owned by Jeff Walvogel. And of course, you know, I have one of those benches right out there on city hall property. The city receives money from this contract and is bound by this agreement, which allows GMR2 to control the content of speech on those benches. My letter from Walvogel this year says, in part, "Advertising rates for your location will be $500, which includes payment to the city of Little Falls," which means the city is taking money from this contract, which means that it is bound thoroughly to this contract. It also reads, my contract with Jeff Walvogel with GMR2 reads in part, "Approval indemnity. GMR2 Investment reserves the right to reject at any time any copy, victorial, otherwise, or otherwise, which is offensive to the moral standards of the community, or which is false, misleading, or deceptive, or which is in violation of existing laws, or which has a tendency to induce or may result in the creation of laws designated to restrict the outdoor advertising industry, or which in the sole discretion of the company in any way reflects on the character, integrity, or standing of any individual firm or corporation. You have made an exception under Section 5.33 Design Ordinance of Ordinance Number 81 for a contract that will not pass constitutional muster or strict scrutiny. Since the Reed v. Towns Gilbert Supreme Court decision last year, I request respectfully you terminate this agreement."
Anyone else wish to speak? Want to follow anyone else wish to speak? Are you none who want information items, golf course updates? Rich, John? Go ahead, Rich.
Good evening. For those of you on the council I haven't met personally, my name is Rich Frym, the new golf course manager. Just wanted to take this opportunity to catch everyone up with what we've done so far since I've been here in the middle of December, and some of the plans for the upcoming season. You probably know, you approved the tree project that is complete on numbers four and five to thin out the pine trees there. There'll be some cleanup yet this spring to finish that project. Also, the repairs to the fourth fairway. There will be some finishing up and final grading, and then we'll get that seeded, and that'll be ready. Probably next season is fairway turf, so we need to just be patient with that. There was some other tree work done over the winter on the 12th, 17th, and 18th holes to remove some trees that impeded play. I think those improvements will go a long way to improve play at the course. And then, obviously, once I get a chance to spend a full season here and observe some other things, then we'll have it to do with this going on with the outdoor stuff. The inside, on the bar, we've removed the keg filler from upstairs and taken it downstairs, which really will impact our employees to be able to make those transitions a lot easier, both with time and with just the strenuous activity that it was to bring them all the way upstairs. I mean, I think it gives the bar a better look. We've done some more renovations behind there to the floor, to the plumbing, and just the overall look of things with the bottles and everything it's set up. Functionally, we'll be unveiling some new menus, both a banquet menu and a regular daily menu. I think that, combined with some reliable fixed hours and a staff that's encouraging our customers, we should have a good year with the inside operation as well. So, any questions of me and the golf course?
The rebranding thing, I know that was a big push last year. Is that just kind of on hold or where can I be?
We've been talking about that too. One of the hopes is that if we can continue pushing that we're open to the public, Little Falls Country Club, open to the public, that that helps open that door. But we'll be exploring that more as the season goes on. As we started getting into the discussion, there was a lot more involved in just the legality or the logistics of changing the name and changing everything else in terms of those operations. So, there might have been a lot to put on our new manager for this season as well. But it is something that we're definitely exploring. We'll come back with further ideas and probably cooperate with that. We're hoping that with this nice early spring weather that we can have the course open in a very early timeframe by most standards for this part of the state. You know, whether or not that's going to be a full-on opening, I would doubt it. You know, March is typically the snowiest month. We usually get a lot of snow in April. But if we can have some temporary openings, I think that could go a long ways. As well as doing, again, doing our newsletter, sending that out, having that going on in March, and then hopefully having an open house, kind of get the season starting type of deal for members and just people to enjoy the pub house. Yeah, to address a couple of those things more directly, April 2nd will be the open house. And we've got a good eyeball on this Saturday, possibly a lot of walking depending on how the weather develops Thursday, this week.
Are we ready to sell memberships?
Yes, Saturday, if we open, we'll be ready to go.
Any other questions, Rich? Thank you, Rich. Stormwater quality analysis, Mississippi Headwaters Board?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council member. My name is Tim Terrell, and I'm the executive director of the Mississippi Headwaters Board. We were formed in 1980 to protect the values of the Mississippi River environmentally. And a few years ago, my board directed me to start working with cities, start talking to them, and look at opportunities, how cities can be involved in protecting this great river and great resource that we have up here. We did that, so we talked with the city, then your city graciously responded. We got a grant, and we were able to do a stormwater analysis on your city. And we presented, not only you went forward and accepted that, but all 12 cities that board the Mississippi River, they weren't part of that process as well. So, now, we presented that, a report of our findings, to everyone at our annual board meeting. And through the discussion with Helen from Soil and Water Conservation, we thought this would be a great opportunity to present to you because not all your members were able to make it. I think your city administrator responded, but either family emergency or was moving that day, so he just couldn't make it. So, we think this would be a great opportunity to give you some education about what some of the other cities are doing and some opportunities that you could potentially be a part of. So, with that, I have Sean Tracy from WSB Introducing, and he will go over this presentation for you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So, I'll give a quick, I'll try to make it as quick as possible overview of what we looked at, why we looked at it, and what that means to the city down the road. Some of these slides were prepared for an earlier presentation that we gave, Tim and I, and they're not going to be relevant to tonight, so I might scroll through them a little bit fast so I'm not stuck on any details. So, a little bit of background. So, the idea behind doing a stormwater retrofit analysis is to sort of precisely target different strategies in the watershed of the city to retrofit in stormwater water quality stormwater practices. Normally, stormwater deals with getting water off the road to protect for flood damage. What we're trying to do here is to also provide some water quality benefits. As a MS4 community, you're charged by the state to do some of this work. The study that this provides, the results of, then can be used by the city to apply for grants to pay for some of this stuff rather than having it come out of the city copper. So, the real value of the study is to look at different opportunities in different cities throughout the Mississippi Headwaters to install various types of practices. One of the types of practices we looked at, and we looked at many different types of practices, are curb-cut bio-retention cells that filter water and either infiltrate it into the ground or filter it through a media that passes to the stormwater pipe before it goes to the river. This protects the water quality, the fish, reduces the cost of treating the water for drinking water in the river. This is one that's being, a picture of one in construction in Bemidji from a project, similar process. Bemidji went through this whole process, and Rayner Baxter went through this process as well. And so, at any rate, this is an example of one of the things that can be done. So, we look at a very, kind of a large-scale, down-to-a-fine scale approach to target. This is a project done and over, same type of deal, just to kind of illustrate the point. There's a desktop analysis that looks at different types of drainage areas, looks at the soil types that are in the area, looks at the land use types, to come up with a model potentially that tells us how much water, what types of pollutants are leaving the watersheds, and where might the city allocate its precious resources, its staff time, any financial resources that it might go towards putting projects in the ground. Ideally, what we're trying to do is identify numbers of different types of best management practices or stormwater features that return the highest yield on investment. So, rather than doing what we used to do in the past, random access conservation, what we're trying to do is be smart about how we allocate our funds. So, when we go out into the field, we've got with us a number of tools available to us, and we come back and we model things, and primarily, we're looking at total suspended sediment and total phosphorus. But there's a lot of other pollutants that come off the watershed as well. So, we model them in some software and come up with a summary table that looks something like this, with prioritized list, sort of a to-do list ranked in terms of dollars per pound of sediment or pounds of phosphorus reduced. That empowers the city then to make financial decisions on how to invest in its stormwater infrastructure, also provides information for grant writing. A lot of this stuff is very, very fungible from the state, but not unless there's a study like this stuff, because it's a highly competitive pot of money. Local case studies, as I mentioned before, we started in Rayner and Baxter, did a couple of projects up there. I'm going to just skip through a lot of this because it's a lot of technical mungwa jumbo we don't really need to worry about today. Examples of different types of ideas. Baxter was fortunate enough to have what 350-acre area, a commercial area, that had no treatment, so we put together a few concepts for them. This is the one they're going to be building, hopefully, next year, depending on when we get the funding lined up. So, a different wetland detention basin, stream remeander with wetlands, and it looks something along those lines when it's all done. Essentially, it's going to be a new park. So, the results of this particular study, we looked at a few different studies. Bemidji, and I'm going to skip past them and get right to you guys here in a minute, but just for context, we looked at Bemidji. Came up with a couple of different projects at Bemidji State, stormwater reuse projects, where we had a pipe that goes under Bemidji State University, an opportunity to take all that water and use it for irrigation as opposed to having it go straight to the lake. So, not only is it a water quality project, but it also reduces the amount of groundwater that they're using, potable groundwater. A couple of other big projects in Bemidji as well. Don't worry about the results right now, we'll get to your stuff. Did the same type of thing in Grand Rapids. We're looking at building a project on the northern green area that you see up there this year, and potentially in the southwestern part next year. This is the spot where we're looking at next year, I'm sorry, this year. And then, the following year, we're going to be going down to the southern part of the city, and you'll see a little green dot at the upper part. That's where we're going to collect a regional-scale alum treatment facility that will scrub the water while this phosphorus before makes it to the lake. Reason phosphorus is so important is it drives algae. If you have an excess amount of phosphorus, you have a lot of algae, it decreases the oxygen in the river or the lake, decreases the fisheries population, increases the cost to the city for treating that water for drinking water. Here in Little Falls, we work with Greg, and came up with a couple of different areas that are probably going to change a little bit now that we've got some additional information from Greg recently. And so, these are the three principal areas we looked at. The upper part, right side, is a big part of the city that drains, that's basically a pipe shed. Whatever falls inside that green block goes to the same outfall to the river. And so, there's a lot of opportunities in the residential area, a couple in the parks. We've got some residential on the west that are questionable. We thought we had a pretty good spot up in the upper part of the city, but that one's not going to work out so well. So, an example of what we looked at, we looked at a number of different things. We looked at end-of-pipe treatment, so new ponds, there really wasn't much room available for new ponds. The city's pretty well-built out. We looked at stormwater harvesting and reuse potentially at the ballfields that you see there for irrigation to capture the first third of the watershed. We looked at putting bio-retention, Boulevard rain gardens in the boulevards to capture some of the water as well in this area. As you're probably familiar with the outfalls, the pipes that discharge to the river sit pretty high, and there's a bit of a bluff there going to the river, so there's not a lot of above-ground opportunity. There are below-ground opportunities throughout the city. I typically don't go right to that because the dollars per pound of pollutant removal is substantially higher. It's a lot easier to maintain, but it's a lot more expensive. So, typically, I'll go with that when there's nothing else available. There are plenty of options for that in the city. There's really nothing limiting that other than you're ripping up the entire street to put something in there. So, you typically want to time it with your street replacement plant down the road if you're going to consider something like that. As I mentioned before, we looked at an area that's a little bit challenging on the west side. It's questionable soils, and most of Little Falls is like that. So, what we do is we wouldn't rely on infiltration, per se, of the water that we capture. We would filter it through a media bed and capture water that's coming down the curve, through a hole in the curve, to what looks like a garden. But then, that water goes through the soil, filters, cleans it out, hits a pipe that goes back to the storm sewer, and then you get about 90% of that, 70 to 90% of the pollutants removed via that method. It also has the added benefit of it being a garden, so you get a bit of an amenity, an aesthetic amenity as well. The place that we also looked at potentially was on the northwest part of town, but again, a bit of a challenging spot. Property is used, if I remember correctly, if I'm wrong, but there's a couple of events that happened out in that area. And it makes it a little bit challenging to put something above the ground because it may get impacted essentially. So, we came up with a few different dollars per square pounds numbers, and we looked at a couple of different treatments in terms of how much we were getting. And we ended up with about 30 to 36% treatment of phosphorus and TST, total suspended sediment, which is actually pretty darn good for retrofitting and stuff. In modern development, you have to go to 60 and 80% of those two parameters. Retrofitting into a built environment, it's difficult to get much past about 30. So, we have opportunity in the city to do work. The results of the study will enable and empower the city to write a grant to pay for all of this. And so, you can improve your stormwater conveyance, you can improve your stormwater volume, you can reduce that a little bit. You can dramatically improve the quality of the water that leaves the city and making it to the river. You do have an obligation as a MS4 city to make steps towards that right now. You don't have a legal obligation to meet a certain value reduction. As the Mississippi River becomes listed with a total maximum daily load, or a TMDL for short, then there will be an actual load allocation to the city. Anything you do between now and that point, you can get credit for it down the road, so you don't have to do it down the road. The funding that's available will not always be here, but the load allocation that's coming down the road will. Immediation strategies, I talked briefly with Greg about this. This isn't something new. We've been doing this in Minnesota for about 20 years. It just hasn't made it out of the Twin Cities area until the last five or six years. So, which is good for Little Falls because all of the lessons learned, all the bumps in the road and all the mistakes and broken toes that people have suffered as the result of falling down and making mistakes, you don't have to make those same mistakes. There's already plenty of lessons learned about the most effective way to get things like these in the ground with the least amount of infrastructure impact and cost to the city. So, we've got a number of different options in the city. Craig, I'm going to bring up your stuff, if you've got it handy, pull it up for me. Oh, there we go. Oh, you had a touchscreen, look at that. So, I asked Greg to throw me sort of an update. So, he looked at some of the rain garden positions and said, "I think I can do better." And he sent me a couple of CAD files. So, what I did was, I said, "You know, Greg, look at the back of the document we got, and look for these types of areas, look for corner properties that capture about five or six properties worth of runoff. Hopefully, there's a stormwater catch basin there we can tie into." So, he did exactly that. He identified them in these red areas that you see, optimal locations based on some criteria, and then his background. He comes from the lottery, he starts his background in the private world as well before coming here, and found some great spots. Now, I'm not saying that the city's going to put a Boulevard rain garden on each one of these spots, what it's saying is those are the doors that we knock on. After working as a, in the public world for six years doing this in 11 counties, I can tell you that if you put out a mail or to this neighborhood, not a damn one of those properties is going to show up at the meeting. It's always going to be the person on top of the hill or at the wrong side of the cash basin. They're not going to, these guys won't show up. But if you show up with a nice 11-by-17 and say, "Hey, look at this, you're a perfect place to put a bio-retention rain garden, and it's optimally located." You don't have to pay a penny, you just need to help us plant it so we know that you're going to take care of it. You'll get about a 30 to 40% buy-in on that. So, we hope for about 20 or 30, so we look for about 60, 70 spots. We target them, we know who to knock on in terms of doors. Soil and Water Conservation District does this all the time. You don't even have to send your own staff up to do it. You get the buy-in, you invite them to a meeting, you show them the process, you show them examples of what it looks like. They get to choose from a template about what it looks like. Then they sign a memorandum of understanding that says, "I will take care of this," which is basically weeding it for 10 years now. Because taxpayers' dollars paid for this, they gotta appreciate that a lot of investment happened to get this in the ground. And they'll get about 30, 40% recruitment on that, and you'll get your 30 or your 20, wherever your target is. So, that's the idea behind the study. And like I said before, you'll get a pretty good buy-in if you take it strategically. These are targeted, and you can come up with some templates, make the design costs a little more reduced, much more efficient. And this type of study can get you the funding. Typically, the grants are 75% grant for the cost of the entire thing, design bill. The 25% is either a financial or an in-kind match. And that can be during the meetings, that can be volunteer effort, that can be the education outreach meetings that I talked about. The Conservation District's time can be put towards match. So, really, there's a very small likelihood you'd have to spend a buck on this entire project to get stormwater infrastructure put in, if that's something you want to do down the road. The study exists, the supplemental information from Greg would be something that you'd want to include on any grant application. The Conservation District, the Mississippi Headwaters Board regularly writes and wins these grants. So, they're a good teaming partner to consider down the road. I think with that, I'll take any questions that you might have, whether on the process or what the benefits are explicitly, anything at all. And I said, "Damn," I'm sorry, I'm slow.
Do you have any questions for John? So in the past, you get a lot of participation in maintaining these once they're installed?
Yeah, you do. If you do your homework upfront, you do your education outreach upfront, you do. The people that sign up are, become very aware through an honest information exchange. And that first door knocking meeting and then the public meeting, when you have everybody come here and you have a PowerPoint, say, here's what a typical rain garden looks like in terms of maintenance. Typically I or a lot of people will come up with like three sort of design plans. So some of the maintenance is already planned for in the design so that it's easy to maintain. You know, if you have thirty, forty species in a two hundred square foot area, no one's going to know one from the other, let alone one from a weed. So the planting plants are relatively very simple. That doesn't mean they're not well thought out. They're perennial, so you don't have to replace them. They come back every year. Typically there's a four bay or a set at the inlet where the water comes in. There's a little four bay catch, catches a lot of the sediment right there so it doesn't get distributed throughout the rain garden area where it can plug things up and make it really difficult to pull out. So there's a number of design features that if it's done right, can assure that the maintenance is reduced as much as possible. And the least maintenance type of rain garden is one that's basically low growing shrubs. If it's not woody, then you pull it out. You don't have to know whether it's an oak tree or a blade of bluegrass. If it's not woody, you pull it out. So you do have to consider sidelines. So some of the shrubby woodies, you want to make sure they're, you know, no tolerant, but whatever city ordinance has got, typically thirty inches or less. I'm not sure what yours is, but you want to look at that. The English garden isn't appropriate where you've got bunches and bunches of different flowers. It just doesn't work. Those are the ones that will give it sort of a bad name because eventually the homeowner can't tell that it was between in the spring, what's a weed and what's not until much later and then it looks really weedy is their result. So design elements to help reduce that maintenance really develop quite a bit. There are literally tens of thousands of them in the, over, they're probably close to, well, the city of Maplewood alone has about eight hundred.
These are drought resistant plants?
Yep. Yeah. So the designer needs to be sure that they know what they're doing in selecting the plants, selecting the design of the engineering side of it, make sure it drains in a certain amount of time and make sure that it's drought tolerant, disease tolerant, salt tolerant. So there are some details. It's not as simple as just picking your favorite whatever and throwing it in. But you know, it's been done now for quite a while and with the, you know, the right designer, you can get a really good plan in place. Typically they're native plants with a few cultivars here and there that are familiar for people. Typically we rely on native plants because they have a much deeper root structure, much denser root structure. There's one that I like to use as twenty-one, twenty-two miles of roots in the first eighteen inches of soil. And it constantly expands and contracts and keeps that soil media in the rain garden loose so it can filter the water at the right rate that we need it to.
Well, the native plants have survived many years, so they're tolerant?
Yeah. That's exactly it. Right plant, right place.
Any other questions?
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How large is that rain garden you're talking about?
It's very site dependent. Very site dependent. We like to do about two to three hundred to four hundred square feet. So twenty by ten, thirty by ten. But it really depends on each site. You sort of start with a template, but then you have to sort of customize it to each spot to make sure it fits. Typically it's constrained by the right of way in the back of curb. Typically there's one eighteen inch strip of grass between the back of the curb and the start of the garden to frame it in nicely. And then it doesn't typically go past that right of way basement behind the curb, which varies from street type to street type. So there are some things that you have to look out for, existing landscaping, utility boxes, fire hydrants, you know, various ordinance garden gnomes. Got to be real careful with where you put them. So you kind of customize them to the site. Typically it's not in an area that's really hilly because then you're going to have to be using retaining walls and that jacks the price up quite a bit.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
May I speak, gentlemen, regarding this issue? This presentation? Kevin Moore, County Commissioner District One and Mississippi Headwaters Board Chair this year. And when I became a county commissioner three, a little over three years ago, I, it was very important that I get on the Mississippi Headwaters Board and I wanted to bring whatever resources that we could to Little Falls, to Morrison County. I knew that some of these issues were coming up regarding MS four cities and their requirement to address stormwater issues. So two years ago, when we wrote the grant and provided the stormwater assessment for Little Falls, I knew that that had to be in place before we could apply for grants to Bowser, Lissard, Sam's, Ultra Heritage Fund and such. So that being said, I heard Sean and I requested that Tim and Sean come tonight to present to you, because this was presented at our annual Headwaters Board meeting in Walker here a few months back. I would like to encourage, really encourage staff, your staff here to work with Helen and to really take her input into consideration. Helen has been working with applying for grants for a while. This past summer, the Headwaters Board got a grant of a hundred forty-seven, a hundred forty-one thousand dollars. And that grant could have went to any of three MS four cities, Bemidji, Grand Rapids and Little Falls, okay? Bemidji dropped out because their region of the college left and it was going to be a program at the college and that didn't happen. So the hundred forty-one thousand dollars went, all went to Grand Rapids for some projects they have there. So Helen is very aware of, and I refer you to Helen because she's done these grants and she's very aware of these different funds and the criteria that as far as the projects, how they will fit and accomplish getting these funds. So that's why I wanted to talk tonight, to just encourage you to work with Helen. She has the expertise as opposed to putting in applications that may not go anywhere for stuff that these different funds won't fund. So with that being said, I just wanted to share that and wanted you to know that any resources we can bring to Little Falls to get this done with the help of state dollars, I think helps us all. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Go ahead, Alan.
I'm sorry I didn't have to talk tonight, but I just wanted, Sean's presentation reminded me that I should be updating you on where we're at with the local water plan because Morrison County's water plan has been adopted by the city of Little Falls. When Greg and I have collectively tried to get some money the last two years through Clean Water Legacy for grit chambers, I think part of our failing is one, they're not considering it very innovative because they're expensive. They would like the city to look at other alternatives, which this may be one. But if I don't have it in the water plan and actually spelled out, city of Little Falls is working on this, this and this, and then I can more readily apply for it because then if Clean Water Fund application or a Clean Water Partnership through MPCA or any of it, you reference back to your water plan as to where it actually identifies that that was one of your goals and objectives. So the water plan will be rewritten this year and I'd very much like to work closely with Greg and the city council on what your needs are to make sure it gets into the new plan so that I am in a position to get you funding in the future. Then also MPCA will now, the Mississippi River from the Crowing River to Blanchard Dam is now scheduled for monitoring. So for the next four years, the Mississippi River is scheduled for monitoring and we'll be working real closely with what those risk factors they show and be able to keep you informed as to what we're seeing for a chemical analysis as well as what tributaries might be bringing into the Mississippi. So just want to keep that in mind and I'll keep you abreast. Not only Greg is closely involved with us, but Dwayne Hyden does a fabulous job and we're very involved with him and your well head protector program. He's been so tremendous to help carry that forward and we try to assist in any way we can. But if you could have any kind of planning meeting that you start to identify some things that you think might be eligible for Clean Water Funds, let's get it on paper so that I have it in that plan on your behalf. Thank you.
Thanks, Helen. Thank you. Any other questions for? Any other resources? Very none. Want to alley installation, block one hundred there?
Yeah. Last time that we had discussed the alley over at block one hundred there is a decision. We kind of left it that I would bring back a cost estimate of what it costs to install that alley back through there. After we pulled together some numbers and some pricing for it, if we were to bid this out, which we're not necessarily proposing to do, we can do it with our local forces here, the cost to install that alley is five thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars. The bulk of it obviously is going to be the class five in terms of putting it on. I think we can save some money by having our own forces do that. So unless, you know, unless we hear, you know, a large objection to that, probably move forward with getting that alley installed, removing those two or three large openings that are in there to maybe get that installed as the residents requested. You recall we did send out notifications or input from the residents. Four of the respondents were in favor, two of them were not. So going based off of what they were wanting of our recommendations, looks like we'll move forward with getting that alley installed.
I know it's contacted by the one that actually brought the deal forward because he wants to put the addition on his garage and he's waiting to get a permit till he turns the yard or he's going to put an alley in.
Sure. There's a couple of them. Talked to me about that. You were wondering if it was going through. It didn't hear any.
So if the one that you have in need of the garage access off already, it goes whoever would pick it, someone who's got the ground built with it. Correct. Their doors on the alley.
Right.
Got a picture of that alley?
Ooh. I can get one.
She don't want, but she wants to have the access to her garage off there.
Do you have that? Do you have that? Are there vehicles there? Both of the gnomes were at the end of the block and access was attached.
Well, yeah, they gave it access to ground, so if you block out, put a curb grass there, they'd get first on screen.
Um, where's the, is this? This is on the south side looking north. There's a couple of large openers up in here that we have to weaver out when we bring our plow truck in through there. With the new plow truck being designated for this road, because that's the one that we're looking at replacing, it's just not going to be able to fit through there with the, with the plow and the movement that's going to be on there.
So the trees to be rehooked, that first one will have to go too?
This first one will have to go as well and then there's a couple of larger openers that can through here and there as well.
Can you flip that on the north side of the hut?
That's looking south.
Them two properties on the end, they have access to a garage.
Correct. And you can see a little bit better, there's the one oak tree and right back here is the other one.
Won't take too much to put an alley through there.
Correct. Correct. That's why I was saying, you know, the biggest expense if we do it ourselves is going to be the class five. And the price that I gave, given you earlier, that fifty-two hundred would be if we contracted that up. And we can do that if our forces cannot compensate that much.
And this isn't property on the original, all of the, it's a.
With the alley construction up to the new gravel base in the city, if that's how they elected to have it locked up in addition to the city, that would be part of our chapter code nine I project that we assess, up to the gravel on the base, that's the city cost.
Any other questions for Greg? So it's just going to be a sprint project?
Correct. Yep.
On Amenden City, Chapter Code Four, Municipal and Public Utilities Review?
As we called out in our budget, we made some changes to our building structure for water and wastewater and especially in the, connect the monthly fee, the non-operating expense charges that we're going to have. When reviewing our ordinances, the changes that we make, we're making are not going to be in, are not listed as such in the ordinance of how we operate typically. And looking at Chapter Four as a whole, there's a lot of items in there that were outdated, things that we just really needed to clean up. So we went through and basically gave you a red line copy of everything in the ordinance that we're kind of adjusting. A lot of it's just, you know, minor things and work usage, eliminating some functions that we don't do anymore in terms of how we calculate the usage rates and simplifying it so that it is based on a usage charge and an operating charge, so, or non-operating charge. So, you know, it's an extensive ordinance, about fifty, sixty pages. So there's a lot of individual items in there, but as a whole, it's basically cleaning that up to ensure that we're doing things. It's listed in the ordinance, the way that we're going to operate in terms of our building structure and then cleaning up some other language that was in there that needed to be fixed. Like mentionings of that the city administrator would be reviewing installations of sewer pipe and ground. I don't think that I'm, or any of my colleagues are like the professional that is capable of managing that supervision. So we indicated that it would be the city that'll operate it so that we have the right person for the job to handle those things. So, you know, if there's any other questions in there, you know, starting in the whole of the fifty-some pages of the document that you would want considered to be changed, now would be a good time to bring it to our attention. It does address the water, the wastewater, the storm sewer, the garbage recycling, anything that will be considered as a utility function that the city either operates or contracts out for operation or something. With that, any other questions regarding that subject? It's going to be brought to, for introduction.
So is there a public hearing on this one too or no need for public hearing?
No need for public hearing.
For some reason I have white pages all the way through there. None of the downloads.
If you close it, reopen it right there.
Oh, okay. I'll do that one later. Any other questions for John or Laurie or Greg on that one? Chapter four?
Well, we, all we do is then, both are all in comments.
Multiple times. And even then, I think there'll still be some cleanup stuff once we start to really get it addressed. Like then, you know, in order to get it downloaded from Sterling or Codifiers, you know, we had to pull and bring it out of PDF format into a Word format. So there's a lot of little things to, just justifications, numerations, things like that that we'll need cleaning up.
Okay. Parking lot improvements for Boys and Girls Club? John?
And I did ask for Deb Gruber to come as well if there was any other questions. You know, back in two thousand nine, the city and county were in discussions about when the county acquired that their, the plans were to put together a parking lot and then work with the city and go cost share, looking at about a twenty-five percent of the city, seventy-five percent of the county cost sharing mechanism at that time. Since then, you know, nothing was picked up at that time. It's been kind of sitting idly. The county has now moved forward and actually finished the hazardous removal and demolition of the lot and will get the site cleared globally for us if we were to choose to move forward with kind of continuing with that initial discussion of partnership, which I know it wasn't approved at the time, but I do think. it would be kind of twice a day crossing twenty-seven if we were. So, if there's any other questions for myself or Deb, we're happy to answer.
I know the library could really use some spots. We've been discussing this for years, waiting for this day, so this is good news. If the county employees fill it up, it won't be much available for the library.
Yeah, we would make sure that there's, it's signed and marked that there's some that are designated as ideal for the library and, you know, the rest would be available for public parking and highly encouraged for county users.
You know, a couple of years ago, we had the, the cities, county and township, there was talk of a parking ramp instead of a parking lot with an open end walkway to avoid traffic problems on Highway twenty-seven. And then I look at this, I see that the city would pay to put in a parking lot, which could then, at any point thereafter, the county would build a building. I'm not sure that's, that's an appropriate agreement, and I guess I would like to know where, where the talks went relative to a parking ramp versus a parking lot. I know there are tremendous expenses with that, but if you're talking forty sites, you could double or triple that very easily with a ramp instead of a lot. And to cross Highway twenty-seven, you walk through town at eight o'clock in the morning and it's a real circus. And at four o'clock in the afternoon, it's even worse, and then you throw a train in there. So, you see traffic backed up from train tracks all the way up past Pearlville. So, you can have a potential mess there with pedestrians crossing Highway twenty-seven, but it's something that I, I personally don't feel comfortable with this. And I guess I would like to see the alternative numbers as to what could happen with that and then what guarantee there may be that it would continue to be a parking lot and what other options there are available.
Yeah, I should clarify that the structure opportunity was not for, to actually put a building on there, that was actually just like a storage garage or something on the set.
Mr. Chair, Deb Gruber with Morrison County is going to be here. The plans that we had, and this agreement kind of dates back, predates both John and I, so you got to bear with us here and a lot of folks at the table, that's for sure. But originally intended, there was an agreement or kind of a understanding that it would be a seventy-five, twenty-five split with the city from what I can gather and from what the documents say that it kind of, that was the arrangement and the discussion and that didn't happen. The county did proceed and purchase the, the building and I think it was a good thing in the end. And I know we're all very pleased at the, the foundation it gave the Boys and Girls Club and where they're at in terms of success with that, and I think that building helped. So, it was a good thing in the end, I'm glad it happened. We did proceed and we have removed and demoed the building as we talked about. And then I had approached John and asked if there would be any type of interest with the city council and we'd love to talk again about whether or not you wanted to participate in that parking lot, knowing we have that similar interest with that library. You know, we fund the operation of the library, fund the facility, the building and whatnot with the library. And I think all of our collective citizens really utilize that and we know that parking is difficult. And I know that that county facility with all those employees there don't help that situation downtown, city of Little Falls. So, we talked about what to do, we went back to the drawings, I think Greg was here at the time and looked at the drawings and that parking lot is there and fully intended to designate a portion of that, you know, whether it be like twenty-five percent of it or whatever makes sense on that north side of the lot for the, for the library. I think we all understand that that's important and we need to do that. There aren't intention, or any plans or anything like that to build a building, we know we need parking, nobody's arguing that point, I think everybody recognizes that. There are people who visit the courthouse on a daily basis that have to park across the street and have that, that difficulty with that street, there are employees that park across the street already. We're trying to find a way to free up some of that in and out traffic of the government center in the lot on the south side of the building, so we can have employees park on the north side, where it's just two days, two days, or two times a day, give or take, that people are going back and forth. You know, I hear what you're saying, we talked about that, I was at that meeting where we talked about ramps, or we talked about walkways and things of that nature. The cost is huge in terms of where we're at and the gain, the way they talked about, and I think Greg, you tell me, I don't know what I'm talking about with engineering necessarily, but when you start building a structure like that, be it parking places, the actual spaces you get, when you start to have them, them tiered or build other levels, reduces it then, because you need ramps to go up and down and then you need structures and whatnot. So, the costs associated with and the number of actual extra spaces you would get would be tough, I think. Am I right with that? I believe we talked about that a little bit at the time.
Yeah, you are correct on that, yes.
So, while, while a good thought and why, while that maybe would make sense in theory, I don't know practically that was what maybe would be the best for, you know, the best bang for the buck kind of thing with that. So, so anyway, we're back to where we were at with the seventy-five, twenty-five, when we looked at the cost, the current cost, and I appreciate Greg bringing forward current numbers of that. The county has about, oh, I think it was by the time we were done, it would be, oh, I don't know, maybe upwards of two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we've put into that, and then the cost of finishing off that parking lot would be about twenty-five percent of that total arrangement. So, when John and I talked, it seemed as if it was a reasonable place to start anyway and certainly, you know, wanted to gather your thoughts and get your interest as to whether or not we want to move forward with that. I mean, the government center's there, we have all those employees there, that's not going to go away, and I think it's a good thing for the city of Little Falls, I think it's a good thing for downtown to be able to have that, that facility there and everybody can be close to the downtown activities. So, we're just trying to find a better and safer and more reasonable place for both the public who's going in and out of it and then the staff to be able to park, so that's where we're at.
And we have done, you know, parking projects in the past, you know, different public lots, you know, probably some of them have been us acquiring dilapidated property, tearing it down and then, you know, putting a lot there because the lot was needed or else it was the best suited use of the parcel. You know, in this, in this circumstance, the county's done a lot of our, our light work, I guess, in getting the site cleared for us to come in and just put in a parking lot, not do, have to do any of the land acquisition, not have to do any of the kind of preparatory things, the additional costs that, that might be associated with construction. So, you know, in terms of just purely constructing a parking lot, there isn't going to be any better, cheaper option for us to do that. So, I think we're helping by gaining some additional spots for the library, certainly could, you know, hopefully bring some additional relief to the county if, you know, done strategically with encouraging the employees to park on that side and bring up the temporary in and out traffic in the back, so, you know, it would, would be helpful. I don't know how this fits within your other facility planning discussions that you're, you're having with reorganizing some of the, the government center or if that's incorporated in the planning too, but, but certainly in the short term, even without any of that rearrangement, this could, I can see it helping.
In, in short term, long term, the number of staff and the available parking spots around that facility is limited, so any type of advance in that area would be good, because we really just don't have enough. I think there's so many folks that are ended up, end up parking the city lot to the west of the building too, so I know that limits traffic in and out for folks wanting to get to those establishments and those businesses or on the streets, pretty heavy is, it's just, there's too many, you know, it's been, it's been an issue for a long time and so we're trying to find different options and that's why we knew that that property was close, it was for sale, nobody was buying it in the private world, so I think it was a good, good purchase in the end and here's where we're at. So, wondering if we could partner with the city up there?
You know, one other concern relative to parking, just the size of the slots. We live in Morrison County. I think that overwhelming percentage of vehicles heading toward the courthouse, some or another, perhaps by a farmer driving a truck. Try and get into that south lot with a truck. The maneuverability is really tough. When we think of saying forty slots in a lot of that size, I think that's very unnecessary.
We did, we did a layout for that, that lot and that's what we got, we got actually forty-one, but about forty is what you'd expect in there. Typically, you're going to have a width of about ten feet is what you expect for a typical park install and then twenty feet deep is what a typical park install would be.
But typically, parks left there are just smaller.
I hear you, I don't like to drive.
They'll get you in them spots.
Take your shiny truck into that lot.
I've been there all the time to court back the courthouse business.
On both sides when you drive out.
Strategic parking.
This, this one is our plan, our preferred option on the city level is with the diagonal parking.
And it would be something that, that premises to really encourage and I would expand that thirty-minute or I would seek the board's approval to, I don't know, but seek the board's approval to expand that thirty-minute or that in and out traffic parking for the government center, because I think we, we all, you know, service the, the government center and I think that more opportunity for that in and out traffic would be good. And so, I certainly would take away that employee parking on that side, reduce it and encourage it across the street. And that way, it's less public traffic back and forth pedestrian-wise too.
Yeah, members of the council, just thanks for hearing us tonight and having been the previous vice chair of the, of the Greater Regional Library and knowing and going by the library and using it, there's just no parking a majority of the time, it is so heavily used. I'm not opposed to, we'd have to clear with the board, but I mean, even if, if we get forty sites out of there and you need fifteen designated, and even, even if we need, if that could free us up for some more county parking over there, what's left, the other twenty-five, and you need to designate something along that, along that, along that west there for city and not county, I'm not opposed to that. I think this would help us alleviate some of our needs, it would help you, the library, I mean, hopefully we can work together on this and, and that library is a mutual, a mutual investment for all of us and, God, it's so well-used, I mean, it's such a good facility, so I think this would really be beneficial, so.
I just see, they see it overkill too by loading fifteen of them and ten were sitting empty all the time there too and we're wasting ten spots.
And you could study that and see what happens if they're used or, you know what I mean? What we need as time goes, and as far as Mr. Boyham's concerned, Councilman, as far as, whatever we need to do to put that in, and Tony's here, but to ensure that that would remain a parking lot, I have no problem with that. This is about a parking lot for the city and the, and the county, this is about working together. So, whatever we need to do to accomplish that with you and with our county attorney would be, would be, I think I would be in support of that.
Yeah, you could certainly do any type of restrictive covenant or something like that, that the deal is if the city puts in the money, the county agrees to put some type of restriction on the deed that it's to be used as a parking lot and only a parking lot.
For fifteen, twenty years or like, things change and twenty years on the road, you know, so.
Well, what you would do is you would put some type of reverter in there where, and we have that, what do we have, the golf course, where it, you know, if they don't use it as a parking lot, suppose a percentage or whatever you want to fix it at, we revert back to the city. You know, you have some options on that, either a lengthy restriction or some type of reversion.
Yep. Any other questions, any other?
I didn't see the design, does the access come off the alley or right off the?
No, the plan right now would be coming off the third street on the south end and it would loop around to exit on the third street as well. So, the alley, the alleyway would not be an entrance or exit for any direction.
So, where would the entrance be to Highway twenty-seven? Twenty-second, we'd have to turn on the third street and then it would, and there's a light on fourth street.
Yep. So, they could go up to fourth street, loop around and enter into the park.
So, that would, that would not be a convenient setup.
Basically where it is now, we pull in now, we pull into the library?
Yes.
Yeah, the same side as the library's parking lot.
So, folks are used to going in and out right there, you know?
Was there a plan of combining two parking lots, libraries and this, maybe get a few extra spots or?
That wasn't discussed.
No, in the original deal, it was the, the room between the two parking lots, we would use that for stormwater, you know, we'd get everything to the north there and use that for.
After hearing the, this is Headwaters.